Buenas noches, mi nombre es Nairobi Rosa, directora de participación comunitaria y servicios para residenciales de One Hoi'ok. Gracias por asistir a nuestro foro bilingüe para los candidatos de los distritos uno, dos, cuatro y siete, que se postulan en la ciudad de Hoi'ok. Antes de presentar a los candidatos tenemos que explicar el proceso y las reglas. Primero, para que el foro fluya y tengamos la oportunidad de terminar, le pedimos que no aplaudan hasta el final del evento. Los candidatos se sientan por orden de barrio. Se les harán dos preguntas de una lista enviada y una tercera pregunta sorpresa que no han visto. A cada candidato se le ha asignado al azar una de dos preguntas sorpresa. Las dos primeras preguntas se realizarán por orden de barrio. En los barrios con más de un candidato presente, el orden se determinará al azar y luego se alternará para cada pregunta. Para la tercera pregunta, el orden será completamente al azar. Esta noche tenemos el honor de contar con intérpretes presentes que interpretan las respuestas de cada candidato. Cada candidato dispondrá de dos minutos para cada pregunta y se realizará interpretación simultánea. Cada intérprete será asignado al azar a un candidato. Compartiremos el evento a través del canal de YouTube de Hoi'ok Media, el canal de Cable 15 y en otras redes sociales cuando concluya el evento. Contamos con Georgie Brown, miembro de participación comunitaria de One Hoi'ok y Linda Pratt, voluntaria comunitaria que controlará el tiempo. También queremos agradecer a Hoi'ok Media por la grabación y el sonido. Les pedimos que por favor silencien sus teléfonos celulares. Los candidatos tendrán ahora un minuto y medio para sus comentarios de apertura. I will be saying this in English, but before we start in English, I would like to welcome a board member from Hoi'ok Media to say a few words.
Good evening everyone, my name is Daniel O'Sullivan and I'm the treasurer for the board of Hoi'ok Media. We are the public access organization for the city of Hoi'ok and we're glad to have the bilingual candidate forum for the city council tonight. Hoi'ok Media is an organization in the city. We're nonprofit and we allow people to come and use our space at no cost to create content and to learn how to use different technologies. You can join our organization for free at hoi'okmedia.org and thank you all again for coming out tonight. You can notice our exits, they are lit green here, here and here. And with that, I'll pass it back to Nairobi. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Daniel. Welcome to our forum. Good evening, my name is Nairobi Rosa, Director of Community Engagement and Resident Services for One Hoi'ok. Thank you for coming to our bilingual forum for wards one, two, four and seven candidates running in the city of Hoi'ok. Before introducing the candidates, we have to explain the process and the rules. First, so that the forum flows and we have the opportunity to finish, we ask that you do not applaud until the end of the event. Candidates are seated in ward order. Candidates will be asked two questions from a list that was sent to them and a third surprise question which they have not seen. Each candidate has been randomly assigned one of two surprise questions. The first two questions will go in ward order. For wards with more than one candidate present, the order will be randomly determined and then alternate for each question. For the third question, the order will be completely random, which we did about fifteen minutes ago. Unfortunately, this evening, two ward counselors were not able to attend. Victor Machado in Ward One is not going to be able to attend tonight and Peter Diaz for Ward Four is also unable to attend. Nicole Marie Masonette currently is running unopposed in Ward Two, as far as we are aware, so she also will be not, there will be another person present with her and also Ward Seven, Meg McGrath Smith. Nicole said she is on her way trying to get here. Hopefully if she comes, we will then add her in. Tonight, we have the honor of having interpreters present who will interpret the answers of each candidate. Each candidate will have two minutes for each question. Simultaneous interpretation will be taking place. Each interpreter will be randomly assigned to a candidate. We will be sharing the event via Hoi'ok Media's YouTube channel, Channel 15 and other social media networks when the event concludes. We have Georgie Brown, Community Engagement Fellow of One Hoi'ok and Linda Pratt, Community Volunteer who will be keeping time. We also want to thank Hoi'ok Media for recording sound and we ask that you please silence your cellphones. The candidates will have one and a half minutes for opening remarks and we will start with Ward One, Jenny Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. Absolutely wonderful seeing so many people here today. I've been honored, I'm honored to have been your Ward One City Councilor for the last four years. During the last four years, I've worked on improving our neighborhood, the cleanliness, community engagement and I'm up again for reelection and I'm hoping to get the support of everyone because I am here because we don't need a lot of talk, we need a lot of action. So I'm here and hoping everybody still supports me and because we do have a lot of work to be done in Hoi'ok and especially in Ward One. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jenny Rivera. We'll move on to Ward Four.
Thank you, Hoi'ok, excuse me, thank you, Hoi'ok, One Hoi'ok CDC and Hoi'ok Media for putting this event together. It's a lot of work and we appreciate you allowing the candidates to get this, have this forum to show the Hoi'ok who we are. I'm Richard Purcell, I'm running for city council in Ward Four. I'm a United States Army veteran, I served in the Army for ten years, active duty. In 2018, I was Hoi'ok's Veteran of the Year. I'm a past American Legion Commander, post twenty-five here in Hoi'ok, thirty-year member, post, past county commander of the entire county with twenty-eight posts under my watch. And I was at for twenty, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. I'm a current member of the War Memorial Building, I've been there for fifteen years. I'm a member of Neighbor to Neighbor. I'm a former board member of Nuestras Reyes. I'm a former board member of Enerhea. I'm a current board member of the Lower Valley Community Land Trust. I've worked on ballot questions in the city. One of them was to pass the Community Preservation Act. The vote no on our sewer department and now I gotta stop because the time just went up, I'm coming up short. I'm being endorsed by the last four city council candidate, current counselors, Millie Santana, Libby Hernandez, Josie Valentin and Coco Givner, the current school committee member, Orlando Luis Inca and past school committee member Gloria Caballero.
Sorry, Richard, you're out of time, it's just a minute and a half.
Joshua Garcia, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Meg?
Hello, my name is Meg McGrath Smith, I'm the current Ward Seven City Councilor. I moved to Hoi'ok twenty years ago when I took my first teaching job. I grew up in Springfield and then Amherst and I was coming from college, I had taken a job working in Springfield and I'm still at that school now. Sometimes I look around council and when folks are having a hard time keeping their peace or taking a breath, I think it's clear some of these folks have never taught seventh grade. I like to keep things professional, I like to be organized, I like to do the work, I like to be responsive to folks and I think it's really important that I'm also coming as a working parent. I have two kiddos who are coming up through Hoi'ok Public Schools and I think that gives me a different perspective. It's really important to me that this is a city that is serving all people really well and is a city that my children are going to get a fabulous education in and are going to want to be part of this community and stay in this community. So everything I do has to do with making sure that this city is vibrant and functional and that means having folks on council who are focused and doing the work and who believe in investment.
Thank you, Meg. We're going to get started with our questions and we're going to start with Ward One. So the first question is for Jenny Rivera. What is your top priority for your ward and how will you involve residents in shaping solutions?
My priorities are to continue to center on public safety, housing and quality of life here in Ward One. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee and as a member of the Hiring Committee that selected our current police chief, I remain committed to strengthening trust and transparency between residents and law enforcement. I'm also focused on improving infrastructure and neighborhood conditions. From repairing streets and sidewalks to enhancing our green spaces and addressing property blight that affects how families live day to day. These improvements are essential to making Ward One safer, cleaner and more vibrant. Finally, I believe in responsible financial management, making sure city resources are used efficiently so that every dollar benefits residents directly. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Rick Purcell, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I got it written down here, thank you. My priority is improve the quality of life of the residents of Ward Four. Get our streets cleaned up of all the trash and litter and slowing down the drivers on our streets. We need speed control in this city. We need noise control in this city as well. Engaging the citizens is part of the solution, that's how we do it. And to engage the citizens, the main thing as a city councilor is communication. We all have to communicate with each other and show up for each other. It's just a matter of us being neighbor to neighborly, I think, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg, same question, would you like me to repeat it?
I think the number one issue in Ward Seven is really delayed work on infrastructure that hasn't been done in a really long time. So, you know, we have not been using taxpayer money to fund roads and a lot of people don't understand that. We've only been using state and federal funding now for decades and as a result, roads were being paved sort of haphazardly. It was based on who was loudest or who, you know, which road had the most people or who had a counselor that really knew how to advocate for them. So this past year, when we were able to really professionalize that process and get all of the roads raided, we then had the DPW and the engineer be able to say, "Your average road is at a seventy." That means that almost half the roads in the city at this point should be paved. It's an incredible backlog of work that needs to be done. The problem is that disinvestment, at a certain point, the bill comes due. You can't kick things down the road forever. So I think it's very important for us to balance what we are asking of the taxpayer with investment. But we do have to balance it. There has to be a way for us to figure out how to chip away and be able to do a little bit more of this work using taxpayer money because at this point, we only paved six roads in the city this year and we really have almost seventy that need to be paved. So it's a lot of investment work that needs to be done, sidewalks, with roads. With Ward Seven, we'll see combined sewer work done that has already started and that is going to be a lot of helping people go through that process because if you haven't seen it, it's a lot. People are basically kind of not able to really use their streets for about a month when the work occurs. So some of it too will be helping folks in my ward navigate all of that because over the next three to four years, a lot of people are going to have their roads impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. And now we're going to transition to question two, back to Ward One. How will you ensure transparency and communication between City Hall and residents in your ward?
I feel engagement, a lot of community engagement. One starting as, like, One Hoi'ok is a perfect example. She's got constant community events going on where any counselor, any city member could go in there and explain how the process of elections work, which is so important, on getting there and letting them know what is the process, what are the ins and outs of the voting. A lot of people don't know that. Getting them to the City Hall, letting them know how it's important to vote. One of the biggest things we need to get out there and let them know that they could go to the City Hall. They could go for a mail-in ballot and just, in fact, just going in there and letting them know there's so many departments and there are steps and processes to each department, which a lot of residents do not know. A lot of residents don't realize that if you come up to me and ask me a question, it's not that I go in front of the city council and it's going to get done. They do not know that, they know it's a process. You come to me, I put in an order and then after the order, it goes into the City Hall, City Chambers. From there, it goes into a committee and then it comes back out of the committee, then goes back in front of the city council. So it's a process to everything where we need to let the community know that this is how you watch Zoom meetings. This is a perfect event where people could watch and see what we're doing and how the City Hall does help and there's a lot of departments that get involved and will help out the citizens of Hoi'ok.
Thank you, Jenny. Richard, same question. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. My name is Richard Purcell. My email address is ricksoke@comcast.net. My phone number is four one three, three seven four, five one one eight. The answer to this question is communication. The answer to all your questions is to communicate. I want the residents to be engaged, engage me, hold my feet to the coals, tell me this is what you want and that's what I will do. I will hold my feet to the coals for you. I will make sure that I respond to constituents, every needs. And if there's a language barrier, I have a lot of friends that are fluent in Spanish that will help me with their interpretation. If I speak broken Spanish and you speak broken English, we'll figure it out. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Meg, same question.
Thank you. I feel like it's really important to be responsive. Ward Seven is engaged. I average three or four phone calls or emails a day and that means that people know that when they reach out to me, they're going to get a response and I'm going to help them figure out what they need. So oftentimes, it's having really good relationships with the department heads so that I know where to send them and I can reach out and say, "Hey, this person really doesn't understand what to do here." Can you reach out to them and help them figure out what the next step is? And some stuff takes time. Not everything goes as fast as I want it to go, but we can be demonstrating, "I've reached out to this person, let's work on this together." Let's keep taking it down the path towards resolving this issue for you. And some issues are not easy. Some issues might take an ordinance change and that's six months of work to go back and forth on public hearings and shepherd something along. You have to stick with it. So I think that's also where being organized and proactive and doing research comes in. It's really important to be accessible and available, but it's also really important to do the work so that people can reach out to you and you know what to say back. You know what direction to lead them in. I will say, I recently started a monthly e-newsletter for folks in Ward Seven and I've been, the door knocking I've been doing this time around, I've been encouraging everyone to give me their emails. I have about three hundred and fifty people on it so far. I'm hoping to continue that. So if you live in Ward Seven and you are not currently getting the newsletter, please email me and say, "I want to be added." My email is megmcgrath@gmail.com. I would love to add you so that you get information on what's going on in the ward and also across the city on council. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we're moving on to the third question. These questions were not given to the candidates ahead of time and when we arrived today, we did a random selection of who will get which random question. So there are two surprise questions that they have not seen and we will ask the candidate based on their pick. So currently, the position, Richard will answer first and he was picked to answer question A. Nicole will answer second. She will be answering question B if she was here or if she got here, I don't know. And Jenny will be answering in third position, question A and Meg will be answering question B. So I will be asking Richard Purcell the first surprise question and as I said, you were selected for question A. What is the most urgent infrastructure need in your ward? What funding would you support to do this?
Infrastructure is affordable housing, excuse me. Affordable housing is needed in Ward Four. We need rent control and that's a question that we want on the ballot, we want it on the ballot and we want it to get passed. Affordable housing because the rent is too high. What I do, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Sure. What funding would you support to do this?
I would support any funding to do this, all the funding to do this. Housing should be a human right, just like healthcare, it should be a human right. There should not be people homeless in our city if we make it a human right. We should create a housing rights office in City Hall for renters to go to for housing concerns because in our city, we have slum lords and those slum lords let those buildings deteriorate. There was a time when I was on, one of my other jobs with Neighbor to Neighbor, was not the job, as an activist, was to save Lyman Terrace. They wanted to tear down Lyman Terrace, kick off four hundred largely Hispanic residents and send them wherever they wanted to send them. They were offering them Section Eight vouchers, but there was no Section Eight housing stock in Hoi'ok. So that's gentrification. Stop gentrification, make affordable housing and make housing a human right. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Jenny, you will be answering actually the same question. What is the most urgent infrastructure need in your ward and what funding would you support to do this?
I would second what Richard Purcell just said, the housing. And I would also say our sidewalks. Being that Ward One has a lot of elderly buildings, I believe I have one, two, three, there might be four in Ward One. Sidewalks because there's so many elderly with wheelchairs, with walkers and it's really hard for them to get up and down the streets. Housing is a big issue. Rent control is a huge issue as well. And I would say the, I would say any community development grants that we could get to work with the city and so we can try to fix this homeless issue we have. And our streets, even though I know our streets are on the schedule, but as we all know, funding is one of the biggest issues. So any community development grants we could get out there, we should.
Thank you. Meg, you've been picked to answer question B. Describe your position on the Municipal Modernization Act and the establishment of a chief financial officer.
Thank you for the question. So over the past six months, folks have been working on creating a new finance department through what's called the Municipal Modernization Act. It has taken a lot of line-by-line work. It's gone through a series of hearings, ordinance committee meetings, turner rules, joint committee meetings and also just offline work. Myself and Counselor Dodean went back and forth many times. You know, I was able to bring edits, he brought edits to an ordinance meeting and we went line through lines, twenty-seven pages of ordinance changes in order to do this. Why is this important? Right now, we have three years, we have not been able to reconcile our books, but there are issues back to two thousand and seven. Things that can't be reconciled, where did the money go? And we can't say why. And why is that? We don't have a finance department. We have multiple folks who do different financial roles across multiple departments. Half are appointed by the mayor, half are appointed by council and right now, with credibility, when something goes wrong, people can just point fingers and say, "I don't know, it's not me." It's somebody else. Because we have overlapping roles and responsibilities, we don't have clear lines of accountability and things don't actually function the way that they should. We have been told by the state for decades that we need to modernize, which is what every town around us has done to create systems that work and we have not. There are counselors who might tell you that all we have to do is hire a treasurer who is better qualified. That will not fix it. This is a structural issue and we have to be willing to vote yes in order to actually make the changes needed to make a finance department that works. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to transition to closing remarks, starting with Ward One, Jenny Rivera.
I would like to thank One Hoi'ok for having us here today. Everyone, once again, thank you for coming and listening to us. Hope this was very informational for you, information that you needed to hear. Once again, I appreciate you and anybody here in Ward One, I would really appreciate your vote and let me continue and move Hoi'ok forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Richard Purcell, closing remarks.
I'm running to be your ward city councilor in Ward Four to improve the quality of life of all the residents in Ward Four. I will respond promptly to constituent issues and problems and advisories. If you want to advise me, you can, I'm open. I have been proven my loyalties to Hoi'ok issues by having boots on the ground and walking hand in hand with many organizations in this city already whose mission is to help the marginalized citizens of our Hoi'ok. I am not fluent in Spanish, but if, like I said, if I speak broken Spanish and you speak broken English, we're going to get together, figure it out. Plus, I have many, many friends that will help with my translation. I have proven my leadership skills in many organizations from the Mount Tom coal plant that shut down, that's a beautiful solar field now, to Hoi'ok Rose and everything in between. I respond to four, I respectfully ask for your vote to Ward Four on November fourth at St. Paul's Church and everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Meg McGrath?
I also want to thank Hoi'ok Media and I want to thank all of the translators for doing their work, both in council meetings and also here tonight. And I want to thank everyone who's been engaged in this election. I will say, I've been worried about this election because the reality is without the mayor having an opponent, I worry about it being a really low turnout. And I think this election is really important because right now, every single council seat, if you're opposed, is up. The entire composition of council could look very different and will look based on how people vote. And I will say, I fully believe that everyone who sits around in the council chambers alongside me loves the city of Hoi'ok. I do not believe there's a single person that doesn't. But I don't think we all share the same vision around what it means to move our city forward. You might have someone that you've known for a long time who has been maybe a good neighbor or you think is a good person. Their politics may not be what is going to move us to where we need to be next. So I would ask folks to do your research and be aware of how people vote and if they're in support of infrastructure, if they're in support of modernizing and actually creating a finance department because these votes really matter for the taxes that you pay, for the sidewalks and the roads that get paved or don't get paved. It matters for our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes our forum tonight for wards one, two, four and seven. We're going to allow about fifteen, twenty minutes for folks in the room to be able to have discussions with the candidates and while we close out and transition to wards three, five and six, I will get started at six thirty. Thank you, everyone, and now we can applaud. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Nairobi Rosa, directora de servicio comunitario y residenciales de One Hoi'ok. Gracias por asistir a nuestro foro bilingüe para los candidatos de los distritos tres, cinco y seis que se postulan en la ciudad de Hoi'ok. Antes de presentar a los candidatos, tenemos que explicar el proceso y las reglas. Primero, para que el foro fluya y tengamos la oportunidad de terminar, les pedimos que no aplaudan hasta el final del evento. Los candidatos se sienten por orden de barrio. Se les hará dos preguntas de una lista enviada y una tercera pregunta sorpresa que no han visto. A cada candidato se le ha asignado al azar una de dos preguntas sorpresa. Las dos primeras preguntas se realizarán por orden de barrio. En los barrios con más de un candidato presente, el orden se determinará al azar y luego se alternará para cada pregunta. Para la tercera pregunta, el orden será completamente al azar. Esta noche tenemos el honor... Esta noche, tenemos el honor de contar con intérpretes presentes que interpretarán las respuestas de cada candidato. Cada candidato dispondrá de dos minutos para cada pregunta, y se realizará interpretación simultánea. Cada intérprete será asignado al azar a un candidato. Compartiremos el evento a través del canal de YouTube de Hoyok Media, el canal de Cable quince, y en otras redes sociales cuando concluya el evento. Contamos con Georgie Brown, miembro de participación comunitaria de One Hoyok, y Linda Pratt, voluntaria comunitaria que controlará el tiempo. También queremos agradecer a Hoyok Media por la grabación y el sonido. Les pedimos que, por favor, silencien sus teléfonos celulares. Los candidatos tendrán ahora un minuto y medio para sus comentarios de apertura. Welcome to our forum. Good evening. My name is Nairobi Rosa, Director of Community Engagement and Resident Services of One Hoyok. Thank you for coming to our bilingual forums for Wards Three, Five, and Six, Candidates Running in the City of Hoyok. Before introducing the candidates, we have to explain the process and the rules. First, so that the forum flows and we have the opportunity to finish, we ask that you do not applaud until the end of the event. Candidates are seated in ward order. Candidates will be asked two questions from a list that was sent to them, and a third surprise question which they have not seen. Each candidate has been randomly assigned one of two surprise questions. The first two questions will go in ward order. For wards with more than one candidate present, the order will be randomly determined, which we did about fifteen minutes ago. And then alternate for each question. For the third question, the order will be completely random. Tonight, we have the honor of having interpreters present who will interpret the answers of each candidate. Each candidate will have two minutes for each question. Simultaneous interpretation will be taking place. Each interpreter will be randomly assigned to a candidate. We will be sharing the event via Hoyok Media's YouTube channel, Cable Channel Fifteen, and other social networks when the event concludes. We have Georgie Brown, Community Engagement Fellow of One Hoyok, and Linda Pratt, Community Volunteer, who will be keeping time. We also want to thank Hoyok Media for recording and sound. We ask that you please silence your cellphones. The candidates will now have one and a half minute for opening remarks. We did complete a random order for the opening and closing remarks. For Ward Three, first position is David Bartley, second position is Ann Talheimer. David, we'll start with you and your opening remarks.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate you putting the forum together, and this is another opportunity for, for me to introduce myself. I, I feel like it's a job interview, so I'll just kind of start from the start. Other than, I will say that I'm in my fourteenth year as a Ward Three City Councilor. I'm in my seventh term, and if I don't start with a thank you, a sincere thank you to all the voters in Ward Three, Elmwood, Elmwood Heights, as we affectionately call it, I'd be remiss. So thank you so much to the, to the voters. It's, it's been um truly a pleasure. I've, I've gotten more on of it than I've ever given. A little bit about me, I'm a lifelong Hoyok resident, for the most part. I lived out of town for a little while, but not too long. I, I graduated from, went to Blessed Sacramento, went to Hoyok High School, I went to Northend Maherman School. I went, I got my bachelor's at UMass, my master's at UMass, and then I took a hiatus from school for a while, I worked for a little bit, then I went back at nights to Winnic, now WinU, Western Union Law School, and I am a full-time practicing lawyer. And so that's a bit about my background. I know elections quite often about the future, but you should at least get to know me a little bit and let you know who I am. I think I'm a pretty educated person, and I'm a very sincere person, and I care so much about this city as a whole, and Elmwood in particular, and I look forward to the debate tonight.
Please no applause until the end. Thank you. Next, Ann Talheimer.
Uh, thank you again for putting this event together. Uh, thank you to the interpreters as well. I think it's really crucial and important that we approach our work in the city as bilingual. Um, things I think people should know about me generally. I'm an artist, I'm an educator, I'm deeply involved in the arts in Hoyok. Uh, I've been a member of the Hoyok Local Cultural Council for over a decade, serving as the organization's treasurer for most of that time and the chair for the last three years. I'm also a renter, I'm a proud renter. Uh, I work as a PCA, so I work in healthcare. And I'm a proud union member, I'm a member of eleven ninety-nine SEIU. I have a doctorate from the University of Delaware, and I, one of the things I'm proudest of in the city of Hoyok is that I fought back with the help of the ACLU against a badly-written ordinance in Hoyok in two thousand and eighteen when my opponent attempted to legislate your lawn signs and instead trampled unfederally-protected free speech. So um I think it's really important that we get to know our candidates uh in all dimensions and in all directions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will transition to Ward Five, Linda Bacon, opening remarks.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone, and thank you to our hosts for having this forum. My name is Linda Bacon, and I serve as your Ward Five City Councilor. It's been my honor and pleasure to serve a few terms now. Uh, the folks in my ward have seen it in their interest to return me to my seat a number of times. And I am grateful for their support, and I am happily willing to do the work to be the ward counselor. Over the years, people have come to know me through my constituent service. I may bring my background as a nurse and a leader in home healthcare to this position. Uh, one of the things that many people shy away from in local politics is doing door-to-door. Well, when you're a visiting nurse, you go to a lot of doors, and so that part has always been a friendly meet and greet for me. So constituent service has been my priority, and also looking out for the taxpayers. The residents know I do my homework and review and research issues and look out for them in Ward Five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Candidate for Ward Six, Juan Anderson Bogos.
Thank you so much, Nairobi, thank you, One Hoyok, and thank you for the translators. You know, as I'm sitting here, I'm reflecting on my life in Hoyok as a child. And I just remember growing up and having a tough time and understanding why I was different. It was a very tough time for me, and I remember trying to make myself through school, and a certain, a certain principal told me, when he saw me crying out in the hallway, that he thought it would be a good idea if I quit and got a job at a warehouse. And that is exactly what I did, until my grandmother stepped in and said, you're going back. I ended up graduating from Hoyok Street School, because by the time I went to Hoyok uh to pack, they told me that I was too old to go to school. And I didn't want that to be the end for me. I didn't, I wanted to get my education. My education is important. It's important to every child here. So I went to street school. I almost fell through the cracks, and now I'm a city councillor. You know, when I first got elected, I didn't even think I belonged, I belonged there, and sometimes I'm made to feel that way. And I'm not going to point fingers, but that's how it is. And so I'm going to stick towards six, not just just towards six, to all of Hoyok to make sure that no little child ever gets treated and left like I was. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. I'm going to remind our audience, please do not clap until the end of the event. The rules were set ahead of time, and also if you cannot follow these rules, we will be asking you to leave. Thank you. We're going to start with the first question, in first position for Ward Three, Ann Talheimer. What is your top priority for your ward, and how will you involve residents in shaping solutions? I ask that all questions be directed specifically to your answers and not to a particular candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to prioritize lowering the cost of living. This is a huge issue in the ward, and improving safety in our neighborhoods, not just when it comes to crime, but also the streets themselves, parking, potholes, safe and accessible sidewalks, snow removal and so forth. And of course, there's Elmwood Forest. This is a point where Councillor Bartley and I agree on the importance of Elmwood Forest, and we both have always supported preserving that important green space in Ward Three. But when it comes to constituent engagement, we could not be further apart. As the city councillor, Councillor Bartley hasn't held community meetings or town halls in Ward Three for years. He'll claim that his email list accomplishes the same thing, but I think we all understand that being present in the community cannot be replaced by a one-way newsletter. So this is a huge priority for me, is reinstating these in-person meetings. I am committed to holding monthly community meetings in Ward Three because I want to hear from you. I want open communication between the constituents and our municipal government. I want your feedback, I want to know what's working and what's not working, and how we can fix it together. These are my main priorities for the ward, because we are in this together. Municipal government is for all of us, and community is key. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Again, I'm going to ask, please direct all your answers to answering the question. Please do not direct any questions or answers to any other candidate. Councillor David Bartley, same question, would you like me to repeat it? What is your top priority for your ward, and how will you involve residents in shaping solutions?
Thank you for the question, and the top priority is always going to be constituent services. And I focus on that during my, my tenure. So in other words, when somebody calls me, or texts me, or emails me, I answer. It's true, at the start of my tenure, which is now going to my fourteen, I mean, my fourteenth year, I held uh across the ward fifty-five separate in-person meetings, and it was wonderful. And then when COVID came along, it sort of changed things and changed the dynamic a little bit. I'm not opposed to going back to it, I just didn't do it because, but COVID really kind of threw a curveball at me. But what I decided to do, and what I did consistently from month after month, year after year, is I've written a newsletter. And so far as I know, Councillor Bacon and I are the only ones that bother to do that. There's no other councillor at large or ward councillor that even does a newsletter. So in terms of engaging the constituency, I live in the ward, my office, my law office is on North Hampton Street. My cellphone is online, people get hold of me all the time. I'm not the greatest at Facebook, I do admit that, and I don't intend to ever get good at it, but I'm, make myself pretty well available. In terms of specific priorities, I'm glad my honorable opponent mentioned the Elmwood Forest. That's a name that I coined. But of course, I was there cleaning that up years before, years before I was elected. Myself and my neighbor, we took out shopping carts, we took out mattresses, we took out trash, we cleaned it up. And then when I became, when I got elected, we worked tirelessly. Unlike what was said in a prior city council meeting, we worked tirelessly to try to change the dynamic of that. I'll have more to say about that tomorrow, but that's such an important thing. So to my constituents, I got your back.
Thank you. We're going to move to Ward Five, Linda Bacon, same question, would you like me to repeat it?
I'm all set, thank you. So as ward councillors, I believe our first priority should always be constituent service. We are the person that is elected from the ward, and so we should be very responsive to the folks in the ward. Certainly not to the neglect of the city as a whole, which we must also attend to. But in terms of constituent service, um, I have a strong record of responding personally to requests by calls or emails. I've known for holding Ward Five Citizen Forums, as I have called them over the years. And I have more recently instituted a Facebook page. And uh periodically, I will also send out updates to a mailing list that I've developed over the years in the ward. As a part of the constituent service, there've been certain projects that took place over the years, and some of them actually took years. Uh, for example, I would point to the Aprmont Light. That was the least safe, unsignaled intersection in the city. That took six years to accomplish, but there it is, and people are pleased to have it. The approach that I've taken, having the forums and getting feedback from the residents, has led me to my top two priorities going forward now. Consistently, I hear taxes are too high, and people are paying too much for too little, and the roads need attention. Interestingly enough, I think the interests of Ward Five as a microcosm of the whole city are speaking volumes for many voices in the city as a whole as well. So I commit to working diligently and doing my homework for the next two years going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we transition to Ward Six, Councillor Juan Anderson Bogos. Same question, would you like me to repeat it?
No, thank you, I'm all set. Um, so back in two thousand and fourteen, um, my house, our house was broken into, and I don't know if many of you know what that feels like, but each sound your house makes at night is a threat. And I found myself losing sleep, asking myself, how could this happen to me? I don't feel safe in my own city. So that's around the time when I started thinking about um possibly running. You know, I was playing with the idea. So to answer the question directly, it's public safety. Right? That's how I feel, it's, it's all about public safety, so. And the way I include my constituents is whether I see you at the grocery store, I have a phone, I, I have a dedicated phone number that I pay out of my own pocket just for constituent work. I have an email easily accessed. Um, and I also created the Ward Six Facebook page where constituents can contact one another. If there's something happening in their neighborhood, we're all on watch. And to me, building this network is what makes not only a good councillor, but a leader, someone who cares about their people. Because at the end of the day, if somebody gets hurt, I feel like, especially on my watch, I feel completely responsible. So public safety is my priority, and not just for Ward Six. I want to make something clear, it's not just for Ward Six. I get calls from all the wards. I am Hoyok, I'm for Hoyok. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to transition to question two, and this time around, starting with Ward Three. The first person picked was David, and so David, you will get the first question. How will you ensure transparency and communication between City Hall and residents in your ward?
Thanks for the question. To ensure that is um something that I've worked hard at during my whole career, Nairobi. And, but it's not easy, because unless you have a councillor that pays attention, reads all the materials, engages in debate, and is able to push back, you're not going to be able to communicate anything out of City Hall. There are so many secrets that happen in City Hall that just don't get communicated forward. It's amazing to me, and I'm just going to give you one small example right now. Although, you might consider a large example. So let's go back to the Elmwood Forest for a minute, where it's twenty-two and a half acres of wooded land untouched for, for generations. Now, within that twenty-two and a half acres, there are multiple parcel owners. One of the parcel owners is a trust, an eight-acre trust, and it hasn't paid taxes since the nineteen seventies. The city law department went to land court to try to take that money back to a, that land back through a process called tax title. It's a very archaic process, but basically it's to foreclose on it. The city law department sent us out a communication, a recent communication, with all the legal processes going on in the city of Hoyok. You know what they left out? Out of the four pages they had, they left out the land court action about Elmwood Forest. Can you imagine that? What a sneaky little group. I immediately filed an order thereafter to, to demand that they amend their, 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 their notice. But to date, they haven't done it, three months have gone by. They haven't even informed the public once, never, their city council once, that they have an action in land court to take the land back. That's the kind of communication, if you don't pay attention to it, if you don't pay attention to the things that go on in that, in that building, we're lost, but I do pay attention.
Thank you. Ann, uh, same question, would you like me to repeat it?
I'm good, but thank you. Uh, so in terms of transparency, I'm, since we're talking about- So in terms of transparency, since we're talking about Elmwood Forest, I think this is also a really good example of this. Because one of the things that I think is so important about transparency and knowledge and getting people involved in municipal government is getting them in the room. It's not just watching online, it's being able to come in and participate in the discussion. And if you were watching city council recently, there were a group of people from the Elmwood Forest group who actually came in because the headache notes had just come in to be received by city council. And they actually got to come into public comment, multiple people, and talk about this very important issue that hadn't really gotten a lot of airtime before because it was community-driven. And part of the reason it was community-driven is because we were there talking. I was talking with one of the organizers. She had asked me about how to find these headache notes, which are not super easy to find. You kind of have to know where to look, right? And talking about, why don't, why aren't people coming to public comment? Why aren't people coming to talk? And they came, and they talked, and they got a commitment from every single one of the city councillors in that room to protect Elmwood Forest. I'm still waiting for some action and some legislation and some orders to be filed by people in city council to formally protect this land, but this is exactly the kind of thing. You know, being able to get a meeting with the mayor and go in with half of the organizers from Elmwood Forest and actually sit down with the mayor. And the mayor and Jeff Burkott have both committed to coming to the next open meeting for the Elmwood Forest. And so that kind of, it's not just talking at people, it's getting people engaged and involved in their own government and being able to speak up in their own authentic ways about the things that are important for them. If we, as elected officials, are not opening those doors and providing those opportunities, what are we really doing? If we're just legislating for people but not involving them in the process, we are selling our constituents short. I want to bring that back to Ward Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And now, same question for Ward Five. Linda Bacon, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm all set, but thank you. I appreciate the offer. So the transparency in our government has been one of my key projects over the last couple of years. I find that on a personal level, I can communicate well in the ward and hold forums, get feedback from folks, and try to address their needs. As far as city transparency goes, that's a little steeper climb. And I've found from time to time, we have to follow some formal processes to ensure that information is shared with the public. In particular, and I'm very happy to say that we're almost getting caught up with this, we had executive committee meetings of the city council that hadn't been released for years. I'm happy to say that at this time, the ones that should have been released, I believe, are. And we have a few remaining, waiting for some pending legal matters that will soon be released. Other than that, on my updates in between citizen forum meetings, I try to keep the citizens in Ward Five aware of the hot topics, or the ones that I think will affect them more greatly than perhaps other issues. Because people are very busy, they don't have time to read a book. But I do believe that we serve the people as public servants, and the business of the people should always be done in public, not in the back room. So I take that seriously. And I also encourage all of my colleagues on the council to know the rules and regs and so that we can serve the public the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Six, would you like, councillor Anderson Burgos, would you like to repeat the question?
No, thank you. But I will answer by starting, have you met me? I mean, yo no tengo pelo en la lengua, and that what translates, what that translates to is the cat does not have my tongue. Social media is a powerful tool, and I have people who are watching. So when it comes to transparency, I am very vocal. That includes the work that's happening in city council chambers, behind city councils' chambers' doors, you name it, in public spaces, and I will call it out. Because our constituents have every single right to know that some of them are being played. Now, again, with transparency, I guess consequences comes with that, right? Because there's two former councillors who filed an order to shut me up. To me, that is not the American way. That is not what we're supposed to be about. We are supposed to be transparent. We are supposed to represent every single constituent. I don't care if you're Democrat, Green Party, Republican. To me, you are Holyoke. You are all that matter. That is it. All I care about is how can I help you as your elected official? That is it. It's as simple as that. It shouldn't be any more than that. Anything else is just antics. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Now we are going to transition to the third question. And by order of position, Ann Thalheimer was picked for the first person to answer question A. What is the most urgent infrastructure need in your ward? And what funding would you support to do this?
Thank you. We have a lot of infrastructure needs, particularly in Ward Three. Two of them pop immediately to mind. Sidewalks and making sure the sidewalks are safe and accessible. That is a huge, huge need. But another large need, as mentioned in the earlier forum question, is rent control. The rent is too high. I am a renter, and my rent keeps going up every single year. We need an Office of Renters' Rights. And this is something that I want to work on with my colleagues in the city council. Everything is expensive right now. The cost of housing is one of those make-or-break expenses in making ends meet. I think it's really crucial that we take a hard look at that and make sure that we are ensuring affordable housing. It makes our communities safer, and we need people who really understand the needs of renters in the city. There are also a number of different things that we could look at, including community development grants, and, you know, think about the CPA. We voted for a reduction, but that doesn't necessarily have to be permanent. There are funding avenues available to find ways into affordable housing and support for the wards. These are really crucial things that we need to think about in Holyoke. Thank you.
Thank you. And second position question would be to Linda, but you were picked for question B. Describe your position on the Municipal Modernization Act and the establishment of a chief financial officer.
Thank you for that question. So we have had many debates and discussion in city council in public on this modernization act, which has changed significantly from when it was first proposed to the form that it is currently in. My concern about the act, which I have expressed in public, is that it is adding more to our city government without showing us how the efficiencies would actually happen. In the meantime, our citizens voted convincingly that we, as a city, do need to appoint a qualified treasurer. In the modernization act, it calls to combine the treasurer and collector offices. I would argue that when you have a treasurer's office in complete disarray, that is not the time to combine positions. That is the time to recruit a qualified, experienced accountant to be our treasurer and help clean up the office along with the consultant that the mayor has hired. So there are structural things within the modernization act that I think make sense. The mayor currently, as the chief executive and chief financial officer, can convene a meeting of every department head and has been given day-to-day responsibility and authority by the city council for our appointees. So I believe, since they want to keep all the same people in the modernization act as employees, except the treasurer, that the mayor can conduct these meetings, call these meetings, and the first order of business is to appoint a qualified treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Juan Anderson Burgos, you were picked for question A. What is the most urgent infrastructure need in your ward? And what funding would you support to do this?
Well, I mean, I talked about public safety, and if you've driven or if you've walked throughout the ward, and I know it's like a broken record because everybody already has mentioned the sidewalks and the conditions of some of our roads. But that's key, because that's how accidents do happen. I personally, when I was knocking on doors, fell because one of the sidewalks was lifted up higher. So one of the key things I think about when it comes to funding, I think about Chapter 90 money. That's one place to go. But of course, there's restrictions there. But, you know, working with the departments, come up with a strategic plan, which roads are the worst ones, and address those first before they get worse. But yeah, public safety will always be my go-to. Because at the end of the day, like I said, if one of my constituents gets hurt, I feel solely responsible. So public safety and using those funds from Chapter 90 or anything else we can come up with as body. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have transitioned to closing remarks. Oh, sorry. I forgot word. Sorry, the order here, I missed it. I'm sorry. Position three. David, your question is question B. Describe your position on the Municipal Modernization Act and the establishment of a chief financial officer.
Yeah, let me just answer it straightforward. I posed it. So the chief financial officer of the city of Holyoke has been for well over 100 years the mayor. The CAFO is a term that just kind of generated out of, apparently out of statewide legislation. I don't think it's been picked up by too many municipalities in the Commonwealth. Certainly, it's been debated in Holyoke for a while, but I made my position clear on the floor of the city council. I will tell you this, Nairobi, at the last ordinance meeting, I probably offered, oh, I don't know, 25 different amendments and probably past 20 of them. So I think we made the legislation a lot better than what it was. But right now, I still don't oppose it because there's some repetitive things within the legislation that I don't think make sense. But I got outvoted 3 to 2 and say, that's the way it goes sometimes. In terms of, in terms of getting the fiscal house in order, I mean, think about this. At the very last finance meeting, the city treasurer said on the microphone that, yes, I forward to you, the city council, via a communication, that the bond rating for the city of Holyoke has been obliterated by Moody's. Now that was a complete and total fabrication. No such communication ever came from our city treasurer. So reflecting on your prior question, how do you communicate to the constituents? Will you pay attention to things? I followed up, we talked, I talked to fellow city employees. Do we ever get a communication from the city treasurer? The answer is flat out, no, we did not. So right now, the city of Holyoke does not have an ability to bond. That is a result of one person. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bartley. And I apologize for messing up the order. Our candidate closing remarks, you'll get a minute and a half, and the order was Ward Three, Ann Thalheimer, Ward Three, David Bartley, Ward Five, Linda Bacon, and Ward Six, Juan Anderson Burgos. That'll be the order for closing remarks. And we will start with you, Ann.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much to Holyoke Media, the translators, the audience, everybody watching at home. These kinds of forums are really, really important. Because when we're talking about voting and we're talking about voter engagement, it's important to get people involved in the process. We have startlingly low turnout rates in Holyoke, in part, I think, because people feel like things never change. It's always the same people. We always see the same faces over and over again. And that's not how local government is supposed to operate. Local government is supposed to be for all of us and represent all of us, and we're not quite there yet. But what we need is you. We need you to get out and vote. We need you to get excited about voting. There are so many interesting and fascinating things that happen at the local level, and it is particularly a place where your vote makes the difference. Think about elections in the past in Holyoke where it has been decided by one single vote. Your vote is your voice. This is crucial. I'm a pretty straightforward person. Please come hang out and talk with me after this. Come find me. I have a Ward Three forum on Facebook that I run. You can find my interview on civil politics that I did a couple of weeks ago from my policy points. It's really important to vote, and it's really important to get involved. And I also want to encourage you to think about running in the future. Because again, government is for all of us. And if like a weirdo like me can get up here and do it and run, so can you. Get involved, get interested, make sure to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Nairobi. Thank you to the residents of Ward Three for continually placing your faith in me. Through seven elections, and actually some preliminaries too, because I've had a few of those in my career, we remain undefeated. And I think we do that because a lot of the people in Elmwood know me. Now, I try to do my best to get out and meet them, but I've met so many people in just the last couple of years. So I don't think there's an absence of communication. I just think that somehow we get disheartened by what we see coming out of City Hall. So I want to run again, and I want to get elected again, and I want to serve again because there's more work to be done. It's my hope and my ask that you'll again put your faith in me. Not just my education or my experience, but also my commitment. There's so many accomplishments that we've had in the ward. I think there's a lot more to be done, and I think, I think you can put your faith in me. Regardless, regardless of what happens on November 4th, I can tell you this. I will proudly walk away from that election knowing that I served Holyoke. It's been such a thrill to follow palely in my father's footsteps when he was Speaker of the House and Don of Boston 14 years. I've now completed 14 years in Holyoke. It's been so much fun. And again, thank you to the residents of Ward Three. Thank you, Holyoke.
Thank you. And Linda?
Thank you. Thanks to the folks in attendance tonight and the folks that will be watching this perhaps on Facebook or other social media, and thanks to our hosts. This election season has become quite challenging with attacks against me and some other councillors. While they are mostly anonymous and many from outside of Holyoke, some are from our own elected officials. Holyoke is a diverse community, and we need to be able to have a diversity of ideas and perspectives about our local government as well. We all embrace our family origins, but we're all Americans, a melting pot of people who over time have met, married, and raised families. We all value our freedoms. Some, like me, call for smaller, more affordable local government with a lighter tax burden. Others believe more government is the solution to problems. I encourage you to vote for me and other independent city councillors who are not afraid to ask questions and walk a different path from the one set by our mayor. We need diversity of thought and ideas as we serve a diverse community. Thank you for your time. Linda, please vote November 4th.
Thank you. Councillor Juan Anderson Burgos?
Thanks again, Nairobi, Juan, Holyoke, and the translators, and of course, I forgot the guests. Listen, my grandparents got here in 1953. They wanted to make a life. They wanted to put their children to school, and they worked extremely hard. And that's one thing that I'm mostly proud of. But what I'm also proud of is, we didn't come from a household name. No one knew who Burgos was, you know, unless you were in the Latino community. No one knew. You people put me in power, and I am so humbled. You have no idea. You put me in this power. But what I want to tell you is, that power is not mine, that power is yours. I am your representation. I am so humbled to every single person who's ever voted for me, who's ever stood behind me. And thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. I can't express how happy I am that I get to represent a marginalized community. But I also want you all to know that, as a community, whether you're Latino, Moreno, Americano, white, it doesn't matter. We are Holyoke. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude our forum this evening, and now we can applause for all the candidates that were here. We have about 10, 15 minutes, and people can talk to the candidates, get to talk to your constituents, and... constituents and thank you very much for being here this evening.